Hi, folks. Let me call the public hearing to order this evening. As has been advertised in the paper and stated at our last meeting, we will have a public hearing in regards to the City of Greer Board of Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Year 2014-15. This will proceed our regularly scheduled call meeting, which I will call the order once we finish the public hearing. Public hearing is an opportunity for you to have a chance to talk to the items in the budget, issues, concerns, and to how that budget came about. It is an opportunity for you to be heard in that regard. What I will do is ask by show of hand if there are any of those that would like to speak. If there are more than one, I will ask you to come in the order that it appears that you've indicated that you would like to speak. If you choose to speak, I'll ask you to come to the podium. That way we will be able to record your remarks. I would ask that you identify yourself and give an address before your comments. With that then, I will call the public meeting to a public hearing to order and ask by show of hands, are there those here this evening that would like to speak in the public hearing regarding the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2014-2015? The record indicates that nobody indicated so. I will afford you the second opportunity to do that. By show of hands, is there anyone that would like to speak in public hearing regarding our upcoming budget? Having asked a second time, I see no one indicates so. Let it be known that this is the third and final time. I will ask if anyone would like to speak in regards to the Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Years 2014 and 2015. By show of hand, is anyone with us this evening that would like to speak in the public hearing regarding the Budget Ordinance? During the third and final call, no one indicated that they would like to speak in the public hearing. I will call the public hearing to close. With that then, we'll move to our regularly scheduled meeting. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Greer City Council. Called and convened this June the 10th, 2014. Being duly assembled, I would ask that you join us in standing. We have Boy Scout Troop 107 with us this evening. Their leader is Raymond Phillips. I am going to ask Troop 107 and Mr. Phillips if you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Lee Dumas will pronounce our invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is great. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for this great city, for all its employees, and all those gathered here tonight. We invoke your presence and we ask you to continue to bless and keep us, help us to always do your will. In precious and holy name we pray. Amen. Part of our regular meeting is called the public forum. This is an opportunity for you to speak to items in regards to agenda items that may be coming before us this evening. Clerk asks before the meeting starts if there's any that would indicate that they want to do so. Ms. Duncan, did anybody ask to appear in public forum this evening?
No.
With that then, we'll move to the minutes of our council meeting. Council, you have the minutes from our May 27th council meeting. I'll ask the motion, they be received?
So, motion, second.
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alver?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes.
Council, we have a presentation this evening. David Seifer from our, who is our Director of Finance and Information Technology is here to present his annual report. Mr. Seifer, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a few members of my staff that are here with me this evening who will be helping present through this presentation tonight. As you're aware, we are part of the Administration Department. We are Finance and Information Technology and presenting the departmental report today for the, which we're in arrears and does actually present a lot of information for Fiscal Year 2013. There will be some updated information as well to include year-to-date numbers through the Fiscal Year 2014. One of the things we'd like to do with our employees is to keep this vision that this council and the City of Greer has put before us, that is to deliver effective and efficient services, to provide a quality of life that makes the City of Greer a great place to live, work, and play. Also, as you're aware, the mission of the City of Greer is a statement where we express some additional values that this city wishes to honor. Those are the City of Greer values and shall provide open and honest government representative of all of its citizens, fiscal responsibility of the public's money through cost-effective services, environmentally sound and prudent management of growth and development to ensure employment opportunity, provide available housing, offer abundant recreation, and to preserve the historic charm of the city. And last but not least, promotion of artistic, athletic, academic, and social values through actions and words. Now, these are ideas and values that we present to our employees. We start this as early as during the interview process, when we bring them onboard, and when we go in training sessions, and department retreats. You see before you the structure of the Finance and Information Technology Department. There are four areas on the finance and accounting side to include business licensing, accounts payable purchasing, payroll, and accounts receivable. And then the accounting functions to include the permitting and the clerks at the front counter. And then the last function is the information technology. We do like to always review the staff. Of course, you see myself there at the top. I'm currently serving on the Board of Directors of the South Carolina Municipal Finance Officers, Clerks and Treasurers Association, and also on the Board of Trustees for the South Carolina Under Retirement Benefits Employee Trust. Next, we have Susan Howell, who was accredited this year as an ABL. She's our Accounting Supervisor, began in 2010, currently attending the Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Institute as well as the Risk Management Institute. Both of those associations are through the Municipal Association, and she will be completing both of those programs this year. And then under her, we have Vicki Adams, your Business License Inspector, started in 2004, is accredited as a Master in Business Licenses, and is serving as the past president of the Business License Officers Association. Next, we have Lady Muniz, an Accounts Payable and Purchasing Coordinator, starting in 2005. Marvin Smith, also credentialed as a CPA, serving as our Payroll and Accounts Receivable Coordinator, starting in 2005. And then one of our newer employees, Jane Susivitz, serving in the Finance Clerk, started in October of 2013. And we have increased the responsibilities there, and she will be attending the Business License Academy to become certified as an ABL, which is an accreditation in business licensing also. Also increasing our training, excuse me, is Jolena Earl, one of our Finance Clerks, started in 2007, and she is presently studying and taking the exams to become a Certified Permanent Technician. And then the next one, the next two are part-time Finance Clerks, Ms. Heather Smith and Catherine Gordon, starting in October 2012 and March of '13, Inspector. On the information technology side, you're familiar with Mr. Jim Rizel. He's credentialed as a CGCIO, that is a Certified Governmental Chief Information Officer. That is offered through a program through the Municipal Association in conjunction with University of North Carolina, serving as our IT Manager. He also is an instructor at Grand Platteck and serves on the Networking Board with ECPI. Underneath that one is our newest employee, Derek Aldrick, serving as our IT Systems Engineer and just started this past November. We do have one vacant position as our IT bench. One of the ideas that is paramount for us as a department is that we are a service department. No matter what we do, no matter who we serve, everything we do is serving somebody else, whether it's on the finance side or the information technology side, doing the permits, doing the transactions, being out in the community where what we produce is not a product, but a service for those we serve. Well, who do we serve? That is the citizens, our businesses, departments in the city, the employees of those departments, regulatory authorities like yourself, as well as other governments. Moving into our citywide financial data, we'll first like to recognize that the city has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, what we commonly call our CAFR. That is awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. We've received that for 16 years in a row, beginning in 1997. We did submit our 2013 audit report for this award also. And I do expect to get it, and if we do, that will be awarded. We expect sometime this August. With this first graph, we're looking at the changes in fund balance over the last 10 fiscal years. So just quickly explaining the graph. There is a bluish-purple line that is our budget percentage, and that is over on top of a kind of a red line, which is our total fund balance, and then a yellow line, which is our unreserved fund balance. And then there's a small portion, see if it is, that is reserved for incomparances at year-end. What's important in this fund balance calculation that we're going to see on the next slide is this yellow bar as a percentage of the annual budget. For those of you that were here, you remember back in 2001 that we actually went negative in our fund balance. But through 2006, you know, the fund balance increased. Had a little bit of a decline in 2007 and 2008, kind of stayed stable. Of course, that's when we entered the recession and dropped to a low point in 2010 again. But since that time, have steadily increased. We currently have a fund balance coverage of 28.66%. A little more detail in the calculation for the fund balance. You see in this, we have a proposed general fund budget that we'll be presenting tonight of 19.7 million. According to our policies, the fund balance target is 35%, giving us a target of a little over 6.9 million. Our current unassigned fund balance, that was the yellow bar on the previous slide, of 5.3 million. Doing some early calculations, we're estimating about $250,000 will be added to our fund balance this current fiscal year. Leads us a remaining target to achieve of 1,367,000. As Mr. Airwood asked, two weeks ago, at that current rate, you know, we're about five or six years out from reaching that fund balance target. This next slide compares the annual budgets to our city assets and assessed value of the city properties. The bottom blue line is our budget from 2004 to 2013. You will see that that has a 47.9% growth over that period. The yellow line is our capitalized assets over the same period, from 30.2 million to 53.74 million. That is a 77.9% growth. And then the pink line is the assessed value of properties inside the city limits as we have developed and annexed properties. You can see that value has grown also from 61.68 million to 96.51 million. What is interesting to look at this is while, you know, some of the analysis of this graph is when you look at the budget, while if you just look at the raw numbers of the budget, it's gone from 12 million to 18 million. I mean, that's tremendous growth in the budget. But comparing that to the population growth, it's about 9% less. So our budget growth has grown at a smaller rate than our population growth. And then our, as we have invested as a city in our capitalized assets, as we've replaced older equipment, gone in newer equipment, and then added further infrastructure to our capitalized assets, you know, that number at 77.9% growth has eclipsed both our budget growth and our assessed value growth. One of the things I wanted to do here was compare our budget as a percent of assessed value to the major cities of Greenville and Spartanburg Counties. And you can see we are right there in the middle of 18.7%. Malden on the low end of 13.6% and Spartanburg on the high end, with a coverage of 24.9%. One thing to note here is, you know, between Greenville, Greenville and Simpsonville, we're all right in there together, about 1% apart with each of us to each other. Malden down at 13.6. What you want to note there is they do have a special purpose district in their fire service area that also helps fund their budget. If you include that, then that 13.6 would be increased to 15.6. Gets them a little closer to the other cities in Spartanburg and Greenville County. This next slide depicts the millage over the last 10 years versus the population growth over that same period. So our millage has remained fairly stable with a minimal increase of only 4.15%. We're currently at 97.8 mills. And then the blue line is our population, starting in 2004, 19,600, and our estimated population in 2013 having grown to 26,645. Next, we'll move out of the city statistical information and move into more of the department and programmatic information. And we'll start with Business Licenses and Inspector Position. I know that is something that you're very attuned to and is an area of interest. Looking at that position going back to 2006, the green, we'll start at the bottom. The bottom purple line there is the break-even point for the staff members that we had in that position. That's what the business license fees would need to be generated to cover that position, all the costs associated with that position. During the years 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, there were two individuals in that position, and that is why there's that decrease between 2009 and 2010 for the break-even point. You compare that purple line to the green line, and all years except 2010, you know, you can see the excess share of the business licenses generated by the inspector positions. Looking at this past year, 2013, the excess there is $232,854. That is the greatest excess that we've had over the life of this program. Looking at how business license serves and impacts the city and its citizens, we work very hard with other departments. You can see there first, in the continued partnership with the Greer Police Department, we developed a program a couple of years ago for emergency business contact information. We're having a lot of alarm calls, and unfortunately, we did not have a lot of that contact information. So when an alarm went off, the police department did not necessarily know who we needed to contact to inform them that their business or their alarm was alarming and going off. So we developed this program to collect this information through the business licenses at renewal time, and we now have this emergency information for every business in the city. In addition to that, we always continually strive to improve our customer service. Part of that that we're working on this past year was development of online forums and explanatory information, getting those forums out there to the community, to the business owners, so that they have those forums ahead of time and information that explains what those forums are for, so that when they come in, they have all the information necessary, rather than coming in and not having everything they need and then having to come back. So it helps there with the efficiency and the customer wait time and getting the licenses turned around. Then we also, with our other partnerships with Building and Development Standards, nuisance abatement, again with the Greer Police Department and Service to Community. And what we do during that program is we typically get questions about businesses in the city. Are they legit? Should they be in the location they're in? Somebody sitting in DND property, which is obviously for sale, you know, should they, do they have a right to be there? We work with these departments to help cover those type of issues. And that's on the issues that are kind of small, up to, you know, bigger nuisance businesses, make sure they're meeting code requirements. And then we also use, you know, since the police department and the inspectors in that department are always out in the field, you know, those give us, those give us extra set of eyes in the field to make sure that our tenor businesses out there are licensed properly. And the goal there is to hopefully ensure that all of the businesses that are serving the City of Greer and serving the citizens are licensed properly. Next, we'll move a little more specifically to finance and accounting. I'm asking Ms. Susan Howell to cover, to come up and present the different aspects.
Okay, I'm going to start out with finance and accounting areas. I'm going to start out with our finance service areas. We have an accounting area, which includes accounts payable, accounts receivable, budget, cash management, debt management, financial reporting, general ledger coding and maintenance, and insurance and bonding. A lot of things included in there. And then we have the next area, which is our audit. We do each year, and as soon as that is completed, we're able to apply and produce the CAFR and try to win another award this year as well. We also service the Business License and Code Enforcement area, the cash handling, which is citywide. Everything, all deposits, transactions, come through the administrative clerks downstairs. Regardless of whether we make the deposit or not, it always goes through our finance group. And then we have subsidiaries, our customer service, frontline contact as well. We realize, and what we've tried to stress to the clerks that have been hired recently is that we know that when someone comes into City Hall or calls City Hall, that may be the only contact they ever have with the city. And so we are striving to make sure that they leave away with a positive experience and a good feeling about the City of Greer. We also do the hospitality, accommodation taxes, payroll, permitting, purchasing, and risk management. This slide here shows the transactions that are processed by our department. And you'll see the three major ones are the checks issued, the receipts, and business license. Those are all done daily. Let me get back, sorry. The total number of transactions for 2013 was 28,334. And you'll see our year-to-date transactions are 28,423, which is already slightly above the 2013 number. And then you can see that we jumped from 26,000 in 2010 to almost, to 28,000 in 2014, and steady increase. And we think this will continue as the city increases their activity as well. And this is just a graphical on format. It's showing that in 2013, we had the 28,334 transactions. Compared to 2009 with the 25,134 transactions, we actually had a 12.7% growth. And then you can see, if we continue at this rate, using the 2014 numbers, our annualized number, we will have a 23.3% growth rate over 2009. And these are some of our projects we're working on now, and we have worked through this year and we are continuing to work on. First thing is increasing transparency, which all these impact our community, increasing transparency. We've modified and added additional financial reports, which I think the council is mostly aware of that. That's what we provide to you, and then the public monthly, greater dashboard utilization. We're also looking at some reporting options to try to give us better reporting software as well as greater dashboard utilization. And then reducing costs. Refinancing debt is one of the things we've done, and we have saved around $629,000 over the remaining life of the debt. So we are happy with that number. And then we have also, with our telecommunications contracts, have saved approximately $1,600 per year. But in addition to the cost savings, we have doubled bandwidth capacity and implemented a redundant internet network pack. The next category, increasing customer service inefficiency, the restructure of permit fees, which as we have the permit fees now, they are a little complicated, and we are working on those to get a more simplified process. Improvements in code enforcement software, which we commonly call code QA. We constantly are making improvements to that so that, making processes easier for everyone. And then we have the integration and publication of GIS information, and that will also be linked to the code QA system, which will help all the staff here, not just the clerks, and then also help staff as they're out in the field. They'll be able to use their mobile devices. And then increased staff training. As David mentioned before, we're having, we've asked Jane to attend the Business License Academy. It's a three-year program to get her ABL and then hopefully her NBL. And then Jolena Earl, she's also working towards becoming a Certified Permanent Technician. We have also partnered with Business and Development Standards to approve permitting processes. We actually had as part of our department retreat last year and the additional day that was just focused on clerks and their processing. Ruthie's team, they did an excellent presentation of the, and made a book of all the processes, and just streamlining things. And this has especially helped us out because, as David said earlier, our finance clerks have been here for, three of the four then have been here less than two years. So there's a lot going on there. So we are also planning at this department retreat to focus again on customer service and improve that as we go along. And then here's some information to add.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be with you this evening to talk about some of the things that are going on in the information technology world. As we mentioned earlier, we are, of course, a service area, and some of the areas that we focus on is, of course, in the area of accessibility, making sure that not only the staff and employees, but also the citizens have access to the information here at the city. Making sure that we have all of the hardware and networking in place to provide that access, accessibility. Of course, needing to secure all that information and who actually gets to what areas of that areas of information. And of course, making sure that we have the software and supporting all the other departments and areas and making sure that they are able to get that. Some of our driving factors that we have is, of course, making sure that we're utilizing these resources efficiently, making the best use of all that information. As mentioned earlier, making sure the public has access to the information, thereby increasing our transparency. Been watching a lot of the weather channels, so I'm a little nervous right now because they've had about two weeks now of tornadoes coming through and the top 10 tornadoes. It's got me thinking about disaster recovery. What happens if something were to happen here in Greer? So, of course, making sure that we have a disaster recovery plan and our data in place so that in the event of having to forbid any type of environmental action that we are able to recover and continue moving on. Of course, we have to make sure that we are maintaining our legal compliances for the information that we have to retain and keep track of. And of course, making sure that we have our physical security, and particularly with the police departments of property evidence, making sure all of that is secure so that not anyone can just walk in or walk out. Some of the technology that we've implemented here recently over the past year is we have been able to get more stable connectivity to our Country Club, Century Park, and Super Road facilities. Earlier, we had a wireless technology, which was absolutely great, and then the trees grew, and the leaves got annoying. We started having issues with maintaining a stable connection. Now we're able to utilize that ethernet over coax technology. Now we're able to utilizing that, a Ethernet over coax technology, we now have a true stable connection and don't have to worry about leaves and tree, tree growths to worry about. We have also increased our Wi-Fi access. This year, we've brought in the City Park Wi-Fi access into our network thereby providing web filtering capabilities so that no one can sit at the playground and access websites that we would not want children to be able to see. So now we're able to filter that. We've also added Wi-Fi access at the baseball fields and all the other ball fields as well. We know the coaches are utilizing Gamechanger, now they can go on and do that online right there at the field in a live format versus having to wait until they get home to upload all that information. We've also expanded our wireless coverage downtown in Greer and also provide an additional service for our citizens as well. Some of the other things that we've also done is we have replaced and upgraded the recording systems for recording the city council meetings and some of the other department meetings for our Building and Development Standards Department as well. We've also added and brought in-house our employee badge printing. So rather than relying on a third party to print our badges and security code them, we now do all of that in-house, which gives us a faster turnaround, turnaround time and greater capability of the design of the badges. Some of the products that we're currently working on, one is we're looking to get City Stadium and Stevens Field connected thereby also providing visual security camera access as well and getting them on the network for further capabilities out there at those parks as well. One of the things that we're also doing is increasing our network capabilities with a video camera network. We have situations where video traffic is a very high bandwidth, high capacity traffic. It takes up a lot of resources to get that video here. If the police department's dispatch are looking at something and I'm looking at something and Parks and Recreation are looking at something, that's a lot of data flooding off our production network, which could slow down the access and program speeds of employees utilizing the system as well. So one of the things that we're doing is creating a separate video network. One of the other projects that we have in place and getting started is the GIS web server integration. It's currently served the employees in-house, but we're also looking to put this public facing so that citizens and companies can also get on our GIS system and see where plots of lands are, the contact numbers and so forth. So we'll be expanding that as well this coming year. Along with the disaster recovery, we want to get our data off-site so that in the event that we lose the facilities here in Greer, have a temporary setup somewhere, like to be able to go to some stores, locations, whether it be another building, another state, something in the cloud, to be able to get the data, pull it down, and then continue on business as usual, as close as possible. We've also, in this mobile world of ours, have worked with WebQA, getting some mobile applications available. On our website, we have the customer service module where citizens can report a pothole, abandoned vehicle, that type of activity. We now have a mobile app that we'll be pushing out here any day now that users with their cellphone can also do that same function. We've also added that, expanded that for what's called a Go Local for Businesses. Someone coming to Greer can also pull down that app on their phone, want to know what restaurants are available, they'll be able to go and get a list of all the rest, of all the restaurants that we have in Greer so they can decide where to go with their phone numbers and so forth. And all the business listings that we have for those that have a business license within the city of Greer are on that list as well. So we have that information resource available. Other project that we're currently working on is our enterprise asset management, working on our workflows and how things progress through the system and making sure everything is documented properly. In that documentation string, we're also working on going green with our DocuFill, DocuScan, DocuMail, all that wonderful document stuff, getting everything digital in digital format, removing all of the papers and get everything all totally digital and easily accessible at that point. Using the current system that we have, we're also expanding that capabilities to other departments, in particular our Building and Development Standards and Store Mart, and then to be able to get their documents all digitized into our system as well. Some of the projects that we have coming up, one is we're looking at getting to a point where we can broadcast live both on our cable channels through Charter Cable and AT&amp;T's Universe, as well as broadcasting on the internet, some of the city council meetings as well as the Building and Development Standards meetings for their boards of architectural review and planning, commission and so forth. Now we've upgraded that hardware, it makes it a little bit easier for us to begin to take this next step, to become more visible. We're also looking at expanding how we can do online payments. We're seeing more and more of a need for that, so we're getting everything in place to get to our online payments. And next, I will ask Mr. Siker to come back and pitch up.
Thank you, Jim and Susan, for bringing the department-specific information. Want to bring this back to a high level again, bringing this back to, you know, city level. Looking at this slide, we saw a portion of this slide earlier, what is highlighted here, effective and efficient services in the vision, in the mission, open and honest government and fiscal responsibility. As a service department for finance and information technology, we combine those two and how do we provide some of these services to the citizen? And we've mentioned this earlier, Susan mentioned it, one of those biggest ways that we bring these two together and presenting information to the public is through our transparency. Hopefully you're aware of most of these, or hopefully aware of all of these. These are currently the financial reports that we have online that are on our website. Some of the biggest ones there are our general fund dashboards, which you see every month. All of our budgeted funds and their annual budgets are on the website, as well as our audited financial statements and the full CAFR. And below that are, you know, a whole list of other reports that, that we put out there for the public that they can view at any time, they can see why we're spending our money and, and some of those, and other local graphs that, that show the activity of the city. And then for a number of years, we've been linked back to from the state treasurer's site. So he has a transparency website of all the cities that have transparent information and he provides a link on the cities through the state level. Referencing the strategic plan, typically, you know, as a service department, we do not have primary responsibility for some of these strategic plan initiatives, however, as a service department, we are secondary and support the other departments in the programs and initiatives that they have put for them. With exception of the first one, which is financial policies, we did, that one is primary to the finance department. And you'll recall, we brought that to you last year and that was where the fund balance policy was put in, as well as a few others. That is implemented and being monitored each and every, oh, I'm sorry. With the codes enforcement permitting software, as Susan mentioned, that is Code QA that is implemented and continually striving to improve the service and permitting process. And then this past year, we deployed mobile ability where the inspectors are able to go out in the field and perform the building inspections on-site and it is all digital and when they're done, they can print a report and hand it on-site to the, to the contractor For the sidewalk maintenance, now you'll see in the proposed budget, we have funding for the rehab in the next year's budget as well as the road maintenance, which is an item we've had in the budget for many years. But this year, we were able to increase that funding and leverage some of the dollars that are provided from Greenwood County. As Jim mentioned earlier, the expansion of our wireless infrastructure and the deploying that public access, we do have additional infrastructure that we're under review to see if that's a project that we wish to undertake. And then finally, we have the expansion of the city security network, as again, as Jim mentioned, bringing on Stevens Field and City Stadium to provide some of their security videos and cameras at that site that we currently do not have. One of the things that I'm proud of for this department is we always get calls every year from other cities, other governments, other states, wanting to know what Greer is doing. Last year, I reported that I talked to Fairbanks, Alaska, didn't get to talk to Alaska this year, but I did talk to the state of Delaware and Ross, Pennsylvania. And that is in addition to the local cities of Gaffney, Greenwood, Marion, and all of them, Pickens, and then Lowcountry, Santee, and even locally central. Well, we are Team Greer and we work very hard to provide that customer service and strive to make Greer the great place to live, work, and play. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Well, I'm sure they were listening, Mr. Siker, didn't they have some questions later? But it doesn't appear they have any right now. So we appreciate the, the presentation, the time that you and your staff spent on for the work that y'all do for us and keeping us informed throughout the year. Wonderful job and we do appreciate it. We have moved for a number of years to make sure that our books were as open and as transparent as any, and I think that your presentation reflects that we're well ahead of the curve and, and we thank y'all for that work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that then, we'll move to the administrator's report, Mr. Grigus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would like to start my report by first saying thank you for allowing me to not be with you at your last meeting. As you're aware, I had the opportunity to participate and attend the graduation ceremonies for my youngest daughter, who is graduating high school, and that's why I was not with you at your last meeting. And again, I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to, to spend some time with my family that evening. A number of things that are, are happening, we want to certainly make sure that you are aware of those. We are participating now in a AAA driver's training program. And the reason I want to mention that is because of the effect that I believe that this is certainly going to have on us as a city. We are, we are working through a series of, of these educational sessions that every one of our employees will participate in an eight-hour training, driver training program is conducted by AAA certified instructor, who is one of our employees, Randall Ballinger. He conducts that training for us on-site at the police training center. Again, we have a series of those meetings and I think we scheduled about 18 of those, of those were, were set up. We have about eight of those remaining. I participated in one of those last week myself. It's, it's good for a number of things, but, but obviously our intent is that we're making our workforce safer, more attentive to their driving habits. We believe that long-term, that our investment in this program will have great returns for us is that we create a safer workplace for our employees, we create an environment less likely that we would have accidents involving our equipment and our vehicles and that we are protecting our employees as well. We'll save money in the long-term and we'll, we'll have more productive employees. Want to make you aware that we have eight of those remaining because we'd like to offer it to you as well. And we will send to you tomorrow the remaining schedule for those classes. If you would like to participate, we encourage you to do so. And one of the reasons that we encourage you to do so is because it's becoming one of the new requirements for us to utilize city vehicles. So all of our licensed drivers that utilize city vehicles are required to participate in this AAA driver training program. We will continue to offer additional classes outside the ones that we are doing now. We'll make those as convenient as we possibly can to our staff and to you if you would like to choose to participate in that training program. You'll be hearing more about it. It's, it's a very unique opportunity for us. It's innovative in that I am not aware of any other municipality or county that is providing the level of training that we are doing in this area. So again, I think there'll be great dividends paid for us in the years to come. If you had the opportunity to join us this past Saturday, you know that we had our employee picnic. We had approximately 300 folks here on the grounds. We were able to utilize City Park and our space here, but it was our families and our employees. It was a wonderful celebration and we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do that each year. It's a, it's a highlight for us as employees each year as we kind of get together. It's one of those few times that we really are able, through an interdepartmental ability to, to have police and fire and courts and admin and the folks over at Parks and Rec and Building Development Standards and public services, all of us come together at one time and then we're also able to bring our families. So it was a great celebration, the weather cooperated, had a wonderful time, good food, and we want to say thank you for allowing us to do that again this year. You may be aware that effective yesterday, there is a new South Carolina law and that is anti-texting. Texting is now banned statewide in the state of South Carolina. The governor signed that legislation yesterday and it is effective immediately. Therefore, you will be seeing come from us, first reading of an ordinance at your next meeting, repealing our ordinance because of that statewide texting ban. It supersedes our local ordinance and so we will need to repeal that off of our books and then you'll, we'll have some information coming to you as well about how our local police department will be enforcing that statewide statute as we continue to move forward. It's very similar to the one that we passed, not identical, but very similar, and we'll have some information that's highlighting for you exactly what that involves and how our police department will be enforcing that as part of a state statute. We invite you to participate in our Greer Community Master Plan. You've been hearing a lot about that over the last several months. That is an initiative of the Partnership for Tomorrow. We are a partner in that process, we've helped fund that process, and there is now a website there called plan greer.com. You have an opportunity to go to that website, learn more about what's happening in the community master planning process. But most importantly, this Thursday night, we have an opportunity at the Cannon Center from 5:30 until 7:30, we'll have an introduction of a program about 5:30 to 6:00. And then we will be actively engaged with our community in a community workshop where we are inviting our entire community to come in. This is the first workshop, there will be others that will follow this, but this really is the kickoff opportunity. We want to share information with our community about what is happening in the community master planning process, what we hope to accomplish in that process, but most importantly, we want to hear from our residents and our businesses about what we would like to see happening in this community in the year 2030. So how do we plan for that, what do we want to look like as we continue to move forward? So the, our design team, our leadership team will be leading up that program for us on Thursday evening. So I encourage you, if your schedule will allow you to attend Thursday evening, it is one of those important events. So in the life of us as a municipality, in the life of us as a community, this kickoff meeting, this community meeting on Thursday evening is very, very important. And your presence would be most appreciated and it is needed as we continue to plan and move forward. But we also want to make sure that folks are aware that we have a community survey tool. That survey tool is accessible through the website, it's accessible through direct link as well, you can connect to it through plan greer.com, you can connect to it through www.cityofgreer.org, you can connect to it through the Chamber of Commerce, you can connect to it through Partnership for Tomorrow, and on and on. We're really getting that out there, but the survey tool is very important for us as well. I believe I, it was reported today, we had about 150 surveys that have been done online as of earlier this morning. We're hoping that number continues to grow as we get the word out. It's a very interactive website. The, the survey tool is very easy to complete, but it allows you to give your personal feedback about what you believe the priorities should be for the community. And then it also allows you to help us plan where we believe businesses should be, where industry should be in our community, so part of land use planning, this, this assists us with that as well. So we encourage you to get the word. So, we encourage you to get the word out. So, if you have links to homeowners associations, if you have links to clubs and organizations, your church, if you have the ability to forward that information, we encourage you to do that. Get it out to as many people as you possibly can. The more that can be involved in this process, the better product we will end up having. So, about this time next year, we are anticipating that we'll have a full report relative to our community master plan, but we have to do the homework, we've got to get the data, we've got to get the involvement and the information from our community. So, we're asking you to help us do that as well. I want to make you, from a calendar perspective, want to make you aware that in a couple of weeks, on the 26th, the Chamber of Commerce Small Business of the Year program will be taking place. So, we encourage you, if you would like to attend that, let us know, we'll make sure that those arrangements are made as well. But it's a great partnership between us and the Chamber of Commerce, as we recognize the Small Business of the Year each year for that program. Freedom Blast is coming up, it'll be just a couple of days after that, that is on Saturday, the 28th. Again, we've had an announcement last week that we're able to really kick that off. Our website is full of information about that program, but again, we will be honoring our veterans, our armed forces as part of that program. It'll be music, it'll be food, it'll be entertainment, bounce houses and rides and things for the children. It is a family atmosphere, it is a wonderful community festival, it's Freedom Blast, it'll be taking place on Saturday, the 28th. So, please make sure to mark your calendars appropriately for that. We began last week with our movie series. If you've seen some of our promotional material, like our fans that have all of the schedule, and so you'll see that starting this past week, June 5th, and running through July 31st, is our outdoor movie series. We had a full amphitheater last Thursday evening. We've been trying for two years to show the movie, Happy Feet 2, and the rains came in the last 10 minutes of the movie. So, I'm not sure if we're gonna, we'll do a spoiler alert and tell folks how it ended, but it's a great, great community atmosphere. That amphitheater is filled with families and young folks that are coming out for a free movie in the park, and it's made available by our Parks and Recreation Department. So, we're glad we're able to continue to participate in that. If you use your cell phone to make selfies, then you can participate in the summer selfies in the city competition. For 10 weeks, we are submitting selfies from all over the city, we are posting those on our website. Now, the only caveat there is that you can't win the prize, I'm sorry, but city employees and the council, we're not going to be able to win, but we're giving away $50 Keep the Green in Greer gift cards. We're going to give away one a week for 10 weeks throughout the summer, as we continue to post selfies of folks throughout the city, around landmarks in our city. Go to the website, see the ones that have already been posted. We believe it's going to be a really fun, catchy way for folks to have fun getting out and about within the city. So, we want to see some selfies of you pop up on that website here pretty soon. When we made our announcement for Freedom Blast, we also had the opportunity to have our folks from Disabled American Veterans, the local chapter, we are participating with them. You may note that we are introducing at Freedom Blast a new mascot, and it is an eagle. Well, we have a competition that's taking place on our website as well, we're trying to select a name for our new mascot. There are 10 choices to choose from, you can go on that site, we're encouraging the public to go on the site and vote for their favorite name. We'll announce the name at Freedom Blast. But we're also participating with the DAV. As part of that promotion, we're selling for a minimum $10 donation, more is certainly acceptable, but for a minimum $10 donation at our front desk here at City Hall, you can purchase one of the mascot eagles, and all of the money from the proceeds of that goes to our local DAV chapter, again, to help support the efforts of our partners over at the DAV. But it's why, again, that we do Freedom Blast each year, to honor our veterans, to honor our disabled American veterans, to honor all folks in our armed forces. And we think this is just another way for us to be able to do that. And last but not least, I did notice a little bit of activity as you were getting signed on to your computers. You are noticing that we are utilizing some new agenda software. We are working through that now, Tammy is heading up that project along with our folks in the IT department. We encourage you, is that as we improve that process, if you have questions or concerns or something looks a little bit different, give us a call, we will walk you through that. It is a growing technology for us, we are now expanding this agenda software to our Parks and Recreation Department, and we're expanding it also to our Building and Development Standards, our Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. So, all of our organizations that come under the umbrella of the city are utilizing this software, so we've needed to make some modifications to it. So, if you see something that looks a little bit different as we are, as we are learning it ourselves, let us know, and we'll help you get through that. Tammy's doing a tutorial session with me tomorrow in our office, because I discovered very quickly today, as I was working through it, that there were some links there that I had no idea how to navigate, and she's going to spend some time walking me through that tomorrow as well. So, we know that as you look at it, you may see some changes. Those are the things that I needed to report to council, a number of items, some agenda items, we'll send you a reminder on the calendar things, but I'd also ask of council your consideration this evening. I do ask for you to consider executive session, one item for economic development, and two separate personnel items that I would ask for your consideration in executive session. One economic development and two separate personnel items. That would conclude my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, then, we'll move to appointments of boards and commissions. We have several that will expire on the end of this month, so I would ask that you take note of those. We have one coming up in regards to the City of Greer appointees with Spartanburg County side, so the Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport Environment Planning Commission. We'll try and have either reconfirmation for our current member or a new one at our next meeting. We'll also have terms expiring on our Board of Architectural Review. You see there two names that are coming up as their term expires. We will have Mr. Pace for recommendations in that regard as well, too, and then you will find under the Board of Zoning Appeals, Districts 1, 3, and 6, your appointees' term will expire on 6/30 of this year. It will require action, so I would suggest that you check with those people and see if they are even willing to continue serving or would like to be replaced on those boards and commissions, so that we can keep them fluid and ready for action as needed. With that, then, we'll move to items of whole business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 9-2014. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2014 through 2015, an ordinance relating to fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. I'll entertain a motion that ordinance number 9-2014 be received.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion, the second floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, as we, I heard it. To make this vote, I'd like to read a little statement that I've put together, and I'd like to make it a part of the record place.
Yes, sir.
Let me first thank Mr. Griggers, Mike Sell, David Seifer, all department heads and managers, and this council in our effort to best manage and lead the city by operating in a manner that puts our citizens first and to make the City of Greer financially strong. By following the path that has brought us to where we are today, we will continue to make Greer a great place to live, work, and play. By looking at our financial position today, projecting out a short two to three years, it's easy for one to forecast the City of Greer will be financially stronger than ever in its history. And having come out of the worst economic downturn since the '30s speaks volumes about the decision-making used to guide our city. As we move into what still is very uncertain economic, what is still a very uncertain economic future, we must continue to manage the way that brought us here today. In our microeconomy that we call Greer, or the upstate of South Carolina, it is incorrect to think the rest of our region, southeast or the country, is doing as well as we. Many across the US have posted little to no growth in construction starts, personal income, or job creation. Factoring in for inflation in energy and food, many households are still in an economic decline. The economic state of the US economy is still very uncertain, it could fall back into a decline by suffering a major event, either being man-made or natural. Let us, the servants of the people and leaders of this city, continue to be good stewards of the people's assets. Before even $1 is spent in the taxpayers' money, let us answer these questions. Does this expenditure move the city far? Is there a high probability the good or service purchased will benefit a majority of our citizens? Does it contribute to a better quality of life? And does it foster an environment for job creation? To this council, we've been called upon by our citizens to serve. Let all we do be able to serve its heart. Let us continue to work hard to make Greer the place to live, work, and play. Again, thank you to the staff for all that you have done, and thank you to this council for the guidance you've provided.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Arrowood makes a great point, that we did come through a very difficult time, where we had to do a lot of belt tightening and make a lot of tough decisions. And I'd like to say, I think we've done a good job with this budget. Most of what I see here is bare bones, we do a lot with a little, as we've always said here. But I do want us to continue to recognize that, as he said, just one bad incident could change this. We still have a federal government that doesn't know how to stop spending, we have a state that had an excess and didn't put it in the proper places, and we have a county that I don't even want to talk about. It's just, it is everywhere, and we don't want to be part of the problem, we want to continue to be good stewards, as Jay said, and let's continue to question every dollar we spend. As you know, Mr. Griggers, I'm always interested in the percentage of payroll to total budget. That actually dropped this time, but it wasn't due to the fact that we lost employees, we gained a half a million dollars, so that's what balanced that out. But it's a good percentage, 60% is a good percentage. So, overall, I think it's a good budget. The one thing I would like to talk about that's on there, and I spoke with them prior to the meeting, the police accreditation. I would like to have a little bit of a talk about that before we jump back into it, just so we can hear the positives and the negatives of doing that. I know it requires a lot of records and a lot of manpower, so. Other than that, I think it's a good budget, and I just, again, as Jay said, let's just continue to make wise decisions.
Others?
Thank you, sir.
Calls to proceed with care and caution, and to be prudent, I think those are certainly ideals that we can live by, and hats off again, as both these gentlemen have said, to our staff for bringing this year's budget before us, and to this council for embracing it as we have. Any other comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, the only other item of whole business we have is the second and final reading of ordinance number 10-2014, this is an ordinance consenting to the inclusion of certain property within the boundaries of that certain joint county industrial and business park established pursuant to the agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park by and between Spartanburg County, South Carolina, and Union County, South Carolina, dated December 28th, 2007. This comes to you for a second reading. Mr. Deaton explained the need for this in our last meeting. If he needs any additional information, he is with us, but I'll entertain a motion that it be received.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Questions or discussion in regards to ordinance number 10-2014? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council on Executive Session, we have one economic development matter and two personnel matters to consider. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn and do executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
And council on executive session, we've considered an economic development matter and two personnel matters, we've taken no action in regards to any of the three matters. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Stand adjourned.